Bow with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day and the rain you brought us. We ask you to please help this commission to make the right decisions for our community and what is in their best needs. We also ask a special prayer for the Sullivan family in Rutherford County as they gather around their son and try to help him. Please put your loving arms around him and help that family as they go through this time. Please help us continue through this meeting and do what's best for Bedford County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting now officially be opened by the Sheriff Austin Swinney.
Hear ye, hear ye, the Bedford County Board of Commissioners now in session. The Honorable Bedford County Mayor Chad Graham presiding.
Thank you, I forgot who I was. All right, let's start with roll call. Is there County Clerk Donna Thomas?
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Boutwell.
Here.
Commissioner Boyette.
Here.
Commissioner Brothers.
Here.
Commissioner Epperson.
Here.
Commissioner Farrar. Commissioner Hooker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Maddox.
Here.
Commissioner Neely.
Here.
Commissioner Pinson.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Vick.
Here.
Commissioner Yaki.
Here.
Eighteen present, zero absent.
All right, so the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the commission meeting on April the ninth. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second, open for discussion or corrections. Hear none, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? All right, so next item is a public comment, and I'm in possession of about seven folks that have told us in advance they're interested in speaking. We're certainly going to do that. If we miss somebody or someone didn't get their paper actually filled out, we've got someone here that can help you with that. So if there's nothing else to, let me tell you what the, what the rule says about that. You're subject to three minutes, any item that is on the agenda itself. So it's got to be germane to the agenda, but as long as it's an agenda item, you have three minutes, whether you want to speak on one item or all the items on there. The first piece of paper that's in front of me is Joe Finch. Okay, if you could push the, there's a button and you need to hold it while you speak, so that way we'll be able to hear you. Can you, somebody can help you.
So I hold it the whole time I speak?
Please.
I can't talk and not move my hands?
We can offer some assistance.
I, thank you. Did that count against my three minutes? I don't know.
Absolutely not.
I've, I've got three minutes, so I'll try to make three points and maybe a little commentary. But the Liberty School wing, four million dollars plus, I'm for that. I think it's, I think it's overdue. I think it's needed, and I would be very much for that. It's been approved by the commission. If I understand, the only, the only thing we've got to do tonight is, is get the money for it, right? Get the money against.
Correct. What's on the agenda is the approval of the resolution to borrow the money.
And I, I think that project by itself, I'd be very much for that. The Juvenile Detention Center, a little over six million dollars. The project, I don't think that's been approved by the commissioners yet. I think it was an add-on. There's been three or four add-ons. I don't like the bundling process, and I'll tell you why I don't like that. It reminds me so much of our Congress that we have. It might not be germane, but it's, it's part of my problem. They put a lot of stuff together. I think each of these projects ought to stand on their own merit. I think there are some good projects, but I think they ought to stand on their own merit. So I would rather they would be broken apart. I don't think we normally have more than one or two Bedford County children in the detention center. Now, I don't like the building. I don't think it should have been the paint store. I didn't like it when he put it over there. I went down there to teach Sunday school. Sometimes it'd be like one child there, maybe two. I don't really think that it's in our best interest to take children in, troubled children in from other counties. If I'm not mistaken, I, we don't receive AM radio all that well over in Normandy, but I think I heard the judge say that Rutherford County has a fourteen million dollar lawsuit now.
That's correct.
In, in some of their, about their juvenile detention.
Well, some collateral to deal with that, but it's a lot more involved.
I, I understand, but you see what I'm saying. I think it puts us at a, at a risk as a county, and I'm not for taking in additional children from other counties. The surplus building, we have a building now. I think this is a nice-to-have project. I, I think it's in the wrong place down there on Lane Parkway, I understand that. I don't think it's a requirement to have that. I think we could manage it there as well as anywhere, and I'm just not, I don't think that's a great thing to spend money on. Back to the, the last thing that I've got, bundling these projects. I just don't think that's a good way to do legislation. I think it puts commissioners in the bad, in a bad position, too. Lots of folks are going to be for the school system, for the liberty wing. I think a lot of people are going to be for that. I think there's going to be some things that people might be for, might not be for. But it puts my two commissioners in a bind, because your daddy told me that perception was reality. Not necessarily reality, but perception was reality, and I'm talking Commissioner Johnson now.
Yeah, you're off on time. I'll give you about twenty extra seconds.
Am I out?
Yes, sir. Because we didn't get you started.
It's because I aren't using myself so long, but.
So, okay, sir, so we need to go to the next one. Thank you for your comments.
I would urge you to vote no on the total, to break these projects apart and vote on separately. Thank you.
All right, and next, I believe it's Ryan, is it Casey? Did I say it correctly?
Yes, Ryan Casey. I have four points of contention with what's here on this agenda for today. The first thing is, as gentlemen just said, lumping these things together is not the way we should do things. Up in Washington, they do this quite often, and that's not how we should do it here in Bedford County. We want to see things handled on their own merit. We want to see them dealt with one at a time. We don't want to see them lumped together. That's a way of, of doing shady business. The second thing, the juvenile facility. The juvenile facility, six, six million plus dollars. Rutherford County had a fourteen million dollar lawsuit, but it's my understanding that had nothing to do with the treatment of children, and they have eighteen, thirteen people there right now, and they have sixty-seven beds or something like that. I could be wrong on those exact numbers, but about that, we don't need to be taking kids in from other counties, and it doesn't make sense to be in that business. Right now, for six million dollars, it would be twenty-seven kids, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for three years to meet that budget of six million dollars. That means we could probably, at our current rate, keep kids in our, sending them off to Rutherford or wherever at two hundred dollars a night for twenty-five to forty-five years at our current rate. That doesn't make any sense for us to spend that money. The surplus building, six hundred thousand dollars. I don't know who quoted six hundred thousand dollars, but I don't, I don't believe there's been any budget discussed. It might have been discussed in the past, but currently, I don't think that that's been brought up. Six hundred thousand dollars seems a bit steep for me. I believe that we can, we can do a lot better than that, and we have a current building that, that will suffice as, to my understanding. Public safety range, hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. I want the law enforcement in, in this county to have the best. However, a range exists. We could spend a fraction of that on that range and have the best. There's no reason to be lumping all these things together when the people that live there might not have had the chance to come here and voice their concerns because they were unaware of this issue. I say that we, we spend money, if we're going to spend money, we should discuss it and spend money on the ranges that currently exist. That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. Next, I have, I believe it's Joseph, is it Bird? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
I'm going to echo the sentiment of these gentlemen here. First off, my problem with this is we're lumping them all together, and that shouldn't be done. Problem number two, from what I understand, the Ag Centers facility expansion and the police, the law enforcement range have not been brought before any committee, to my knowledge, and to what I've saw in videos, they were not brought, brought for, brought before any committees. The juvenile detention center and the surplus building are still on committees, so why are we voting for them tonight? The other thing is, is we have a, it's an over ten million dollar budget on each of these all together, and we have a person working for, supposedly for Bedford County, who is going to get point eight, five percent of those, those things, and we don't know if he's a county employee or if he's a contract employee. If he's a contract employee, I would like to see the bids on, on that, because if he's a contract employee, he's supposed to be bid.
All right, thank you for your comments. Rodney Simmons.
Hello. I have the same concerns about this all being bundled together as these others have spoke of, but I also have concerns about how that three of these projects, the training range, the Ag Center, and the surplus building, did not get approval from the Courthouse and Property Commission. Why did it not follow the protocol that is set in place and just ended up on this agenda tonight to be voted on approved? Additionally, with the juvenile center, why does the cost keep going up so much? A little over a year ago, it was at four million, and every time it gets discussed, it seems like it's increased by a million dollars. Why? We don't know. Has anybody explained that? No, they haven't. And with the firing range, you know, one of the main reasons anybody said anything about the firing range relocation was neighbor complaints. Do you not think people are known complain where it's over there? And does it make sense to put it behind a hospital? Doesn't to me. And then lastly, I think some things need to be explained with the builder representative on these projects. We need clear understanding of how much money he is being paid for each project, and we need a clear understanding of if his salary is included in these costs you presented us, or is it an additional to? And if it's included in these costs, and you're borrowing this money, so are you borrowing money to pay an employee's salary? That's my questions, and I think these need to be answered to the public before a vote is done on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I'm familiar with this name, Brent Smith.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it. It's always hard to go after Joe Finch, so I'll let my, my time go ahead and start here. As you know, I was a county commissioner myself here just a couple of years ago, and have the unique understanding of your responsibility, and I want to personally thank each of you for your commitment and everything that you do for your community and your constituents. Let me first say that transparency in government never goes out of style. Taxpayers want to feel confident their hard-earned money is spent wisely. I've had a chance to review the latest ten million dollar loan resolution, and I got to be honest, guys, it's abhorrent. But what is most concerning is that the request for the omnibus loan did not go through the proper committees, as we've previously heard. It should be vigorously debated and vigorously discussed. The procedure of not using the committees as they were intended sends the wrong message to your constituents. Please use your committees as they were intended versus just sending everything to finance without debate, only to be rubber stamped by this administration. Secondly, I would hope instead of just voting on this bundle package, maybe you could do something else, maybe you could do a line item vote. Thirdly, please don't take the bait on this juvenile detention center. As we've already heard, Murfreesboro has one. It's fully operational since, it sits mostly empty most of the time. They currently have around sixty-four beds, and fifty-five of those are currently open. It costs Bedford County about a hundred and seventy-four dollars a day, going up to two hundred dollars a day next month to house offenders. We are also not state mandated. Again, let me repeat this, we are not state mandated. If we were, every single county in Tennessee would have one of these facilities. I visited our facility just a couple of years ago, so I can tell you firsthand, I counted four or five employees and only four kids. I also recall none of those kids actually being from Bedford County because the kids were there. I've actually got to speak to a couple of them and got to speak with the, with the faculty there to get an idea of who we were exactly housing. In my opinion, and it sounds like there's others that support my opinion, this is a complete waste of money. And let me just say, if you're, if you're going to do this kind of outlay, this kind of expenditure, there's a guy here called Mark Clanton that sure could use some money on roads, because as you can see, our roads in Bedford County are a complete disaster. So all I ask is that you just please consider this, and again, I thank you for everything you do. God bless.
All right, thank you. And next, I have Sammy Coats. I said Sammy, it says Sam, sorry.
Depends on how long you've known me. My mom used to call me Sammy, that's how that came about. But I am Sam Coats III. I'm here Chairman of Bedford County Soil Conservation District. I've invited my board members and Farmer of the Year to be here with me. In nineteen thirty-nine, the State of Tennessee General Assembly authorized the formation of conservation districts across the state. Bedford County organized our district in nineteen fifty-two. We've been around a pretty good while. Our purpose is quite simple, to conserve our natural resources for future generations. We have to make certain that we make available Bedford County farmers and landowners the best methods to preserve and conserve our water resources. Now, that means improve our water quality, increase our wildlife habitat, and keep our creeks and streams, rivers free from soil erosion and contaminants. Our mission is to protect and conserve all of our natural resources. We do this in a number of ways. We partner with many federal and state agencies, promote and establish wildlife habitat. We help establish pollinators, we provide soil health cropping systems, we promote rotational grazing, we promote crop land conversion, livestock fencing and waterers, cover crops, and many other projects and options. We do that by helping the landowners with funding opportunities to promote soil and water conservation methods. This year alone, Bedford County landowners will receive cost shares near one million dollars through grant programs to help protect the soils and protect the water resources and build a better, cleaner environment for everyone. That's an increase from last year, when Bedford County farmers received almost six hundred thousand. When we moved into our current location ten years ago, which I might add was paid for by NRCS lease within four years, we were only two employees. There are four employees now, and we have received funding for a fifth. We have only one office. We converted our storage space into a second office. We cut our entrance into a smaller area and have now created a miniature work area. We have no more space, and we have a new employee set to arrive. We had to purchase a shipping container for, to store our files that we're required to keep, as well as securing our equipment.
We, we are past the three minutes, but you got more in than I thought you were going to.
If you would support us.
All right, thank you.
We, we really need the expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Judge Charles Rich.
I'm going to have to try to figure this out myself. Of course, I'm here to, in support of the Juvenile Detention Center, and I would like everyone to think back and remember on why we have one to begin with, and it was out of a necessity. Back well over twenty years ago now, Clay Parker was the sheriff at the time. He had a situation where it was just a, it was killing his manpower, and we just had a really overall bad situation where we had kids that we couldn't get places for. And the net effect of that was we had them handcuffed to chairs for hours at a time, looking for a place to put them. Sometimes we would, sometimes we couldn't, had to hold them for, like I say, hours. And, you know, if you want to talk about lawsuits, that's the liability of it, was another reason why we went down the path that we did. The county commission supported that at the time, and it has actually turned out to be a really good tool for the juvenile court system, and it has actually been of great benefit to, to these kids and also to their families. There are some misconceptions, I think I'd like to spell out as, as much as I can in the time that I have. You know, we talk about the numbers and the, and the numbers being down. Well, the thing that you have to consider, especially with raw data, you got to understand the context within which that data is obtained. The winter months are always down. In January, when we were frozen over, we had nine kids. But February, we had fifty-nine, March, we had seventy-four, April, we had seventy-one. And in a growing community like what we have, clearly, you know, there, there's no reason for those, those numbers to not sustain, and, and they're much higher than they've ever The other thing, the out-of-county kids coming to Bedford County affecting our school system, that's, that's actually not true. They're not enrolled in our system, they're, which are twelve days, and the benefit that we get is the kids that are ours that are here actually receive their education, excuse me, and they're actually caught up by the time they leave the detention center. And those folks who work very hard take very great pride in that. And so I would like to say, in, in closing, because I know I'm out of time, you know, the situation over in Murfreesboro, they do have staffing problems, and you have to go before a committee because of that lawsuit, and it did involve juveniles, it's exclusively about juveniles, and our.
I, I don't want to cut you off, but to be fair about the system.
I understand.
It's three minutes, sir. All right, thank you. All right, I'm double checking to see if I missed any of the people that requested to speak. One thing I would say before we move on, since there's been such discussion about that, on September the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the county commission approved the due diligence and to go forward with the three projects of the Liberty School, the Juvenile Detention, and the surplus. It was a sixteen oh vote, there was two members not present, which was Commissioner Pinson and Commissioner Sanders. Everyone else voted unanimously to move forward with the project with the understanding that it would have to come back for funding, which is where we are tonight. Both the other two projects have been budget requests year after year that we've not been able to fund. And so with that, we're moving on. Next item on the agenda is election of notaries for June.
May I approve?
Second.
All right, motion is second. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And then we do have a presentation tonight of Chris White and Commissioner Greg Vick will come up here right quick. We want to recognize Chris. He was chosen for a special award, and we're, we're honored to have him, and Greg's going to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, Director White and I were having a conversation. I received a email that said the opportunity to, the opportunity, the opportunity to nominate someone from your county planning office for work that had been done on a specific plan on our rules and regulations. I asked Mr. White, could we do something in his office? We found out we did have a unique plan, which was our solar regulations. We submitted this to the American Planning Association, which is a nationwide organization. I think it's forty thousand people there. The plan went in, and two weeks later, they sent me an email and said, we have selected Chris White for this national award, and could we come to Minneapolis to receive the award? So we came to Minneapolis, and on behalf of the mayor and myself, I'm going to have him present to you this award.
Let me just get the mic and say, thank you for all you do. I think this speaks volumes to our commitment to planning and to have this kind of specialty and recognition for our team says that we have the right people in the right position. So thank you so much for that. All right, you got it right there. Yeah? Oh, he's saying, come on. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-four sixteen. This is a resolution authorizing the sale by the county mayor and provided the details of not to exceed ten point four million dollars general obligation capital outlay note and providing for the levy of taxes in connection therewith. May I approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Motion is second. Commissioner Vick and Commissioner Yaki, Commissioner Farrar. All right, sir. Can you push a button so I can hear you?
I've got a concern, I've had some commissioners concerned with it, as obviously some of the gentlemen that spoke from the public, and I have some concerns as well. I'll go on and state that the standing commission bylaws, I don't think are being followed. And I want to read the bylaws, the standing committee bylaws, Rule Six, this is in Section F. Our standing committees are to investigate and study matters, provide information, and to present to the Board of Commissioners. That is in Rule F in the bylaws for our standing committees. Should questions arise to the jurisdiction, it shall be referred to the Rules Committee. That's where I got involved. I had three, maybe four commissioners that called me, wondering about this resolution and how a resolution is passing our, our legislative system. Now, as my duty as chairperson, I need to make everyone aware of its. Now, as my duty as chairperson, I need to make everyone aware of its authority, which I just have, and the areas of jurisdiction. Now, being so, this is somewhat my opinion, and then we can follow up with other commissioners' comments, but resolutions should not replace our legislative processes. Resolutions should not replace our legislative processes. That means we should be using our standing committees to discuss and debate. Now, the problem with that is, and there's three, it diminishes discussion and debate. The substitute resolution is driven by an administrative office or others that we're not sure who they are. And then you've got the resolution being written up on the whims and wishes of somebody else that may not even be a commissioner. I've got problems with all of that, and as some of the gentlemen in the in the audience said, the resolution is run contrary to our democratic processes of transparent government. So being that, I want to look at this resolution, and certainly tonight, and it needs to be recommended by someone on the Finance Committee. They had fully the full authority to put Liberty School wing. I imagine it's going to pass 18 to nothing, but as the gentleman has stated in the audience, it should not be bundled, and I won't suggest how we get out of this mess. Now, it needs to be voted on tonight. I'd say somebody on Finance can make the motion and second it, as requested by Superintendent Tammy Garrett and the Bedford County School Board, because the Liberty School wing should be built and built immediately. Now, the other items on that listed, and I'll tell you what I suggest doing, the juvenile facility, the surplus facility, and the Ag Center needs to be sent back to Courthouse and Property for discussion and debate. It needs to be deferred and sent back for discussion and debate. The last thing I heard about juvenile detention center was spending two to and then three million, and then maybe four, but I have no idea that it's gotten to six million. Well, I don't, I didn't, nobody's had any input. I don't know how that came about. No, I don't know how they got to the $6 million from three or four million, but we need to find out in committee. And the same thing with surplus facility. Last thing I heard, it was 250,000 maybe being spent, maybe 300,000. Well, that's doubled up to 600,000 all at once. I just wondered where that number came from. And then the training range, I don't know if we need one or not, but it needs to be sent also to the law enforcement as long as and as well as this securest technology contract. Now, I know it was a grant, and I know the monies are being given, but the two commissioners signed off on it were not even in law enforcement. Law enforcement needs to be aware of that. It needs to be sent to Commissioner Thomas, and 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 he should have signed off on this, or Commissioner Pinson, or Boyett, or Maddox. These things need to go through the standing committees. There's a chance that this could have gotten on the agenda, and and some people on law enforcement didn't know anything about it. That's that's not the way we need to do business here in Bedford County. Now, I've got a big problem with these two, and our highway superintendent, I've told Mark, and he's sitting on the front row, that the highway department reports to Rules. It's been that way for years. And all of a sudden, we've got the Finance Committee placing highway department things on the agenda. That's not appropriate. It's done that way. And certainly, we placed the litter and trash collection grant on there for years, and now we use a resolution? It comes out of Rules. I mean, who put that on there for a resolution? We do it. Being the Rules Committee does it every year, and it's done it every year. Now, that right-of-way and road cut permits, that comes to Rules. It doesn't, it's not approved and placed on the agenda by the Finance Committee. It comes to Rules. We've approved the highway list, the roads list, for years and years and years. So all of that, Highway Superintendent Clinton, comes to Rules. I know you're on the Finance Committee, but you're going to make it to the Rules Committee, and you should have been there the 16th of April, and we could have put it on this the way it should be done, through the standing committees. So I've got a serious problem, and I know other people want to address this issue and their concerns, but I would suggest that we certainly vote on Liberty School wing tonight, and then these others need to be referred. The juvenile facility, surplus, and Ag Center needs to go to the Courthouse and Property. The public safety training range needs to go to law enforcement with as Commissioner Mark Thomas is chairperson, and they need to discuss and debate it and talk about it. Some of these people have concerns about not needing one. Maybe we can upgrade the one we have. But it needs to be discussed and debated in law enforcement. And then those other two need to be deferred and sent to Rules. That litter and trash collection comes out of Rules. The right-of-way and the road cut program or permits comes out of Rules, not the Finance Committee. Thank you.
All right, good. So the motion on the floor is, and there's a second, is to approve Resolution 2416. Are you asking to amend the motion? What would you want it to amend it to be?
I would like for the Liberty School wing to be proposed by someone on the Finance Committee, as requested by Superintendent Tammy Garrett and the Bedford County School Board, and voted on immediately. I'd like the other seven issues that are listed to be placed in the appropriate standing committees as our Rules bylaw rules state. It's in our bylaws. Our bylaw rules are not being followed.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
So that's your motion? Would you-
Second.
Point of order.
Mr. Chairman, that is not a proper motion. It is not concise. It's unambiguous. It lacks any form in there. Basically, there's no order process that has been defined. What are we supposed to do? Vote on these individually? Vote on them separately? Start at the bottom? Work to the top? Go to the middle? That is not a proper format in a motion. Now, what if Commissioner Farah is trying to accomplish is to divide the question? If that is his intention, is to ask for a division of the question, then I would like to hear that.
It's a little simpler in that right here at the moment, in that he's asking to amend the motion. Do you accept his amendment to your motion? You have the motion on the floor.
I do not.
Okay. So now, he does not agree to that, so we will vote on the amendment.
Okay, now, it's the amendment is deferred.
The amendment is what you asked for?
Yes, that's right.
Was to vote on vote on Liberty and send all the other ones back?
Yes, yes.
That's what your amendment request to him was? He did not accept that, so we're going to have a vote. And Bill seconded that, so, right. And then Linda was the second on the original motion. So the original motion on the floor is to go forward. Okay, Commissioner Neely.
My question to that would be, in the past, any motions that I have been associated with-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Point of order. His motion does not allow for debate. We are strictly on yes and no vote. There is no debate.
Okay, so hold tight. Right now, the motion, the amended motion on the floor and has a second, but is not accepted by the primary main motion, so we're going to need to vote.
Well, then I'll call a point of order to put in what I think needs to be said.
Okay, but right now, we got a motion, and we got to vote this motion up or down. If this doesn't go, then you can offer another amendment. Is am I correct? Okay. So everybody understands what your, when your name's called, vote for or against. If you vote yes, you're voting to amend the current motion to reflect what Commissioner Biff Farah suggested, and that was only vote on Liberty School and to send the other ones to committee. Does everybody understand? Everybody knows what they're doing. So if you vote yes, you're for doing that. If you vote no, then you're voting to stay with the original main motion, which was to approve the resolution. Everybody understand where we're at? All right, when your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Yaki?
No.
Commissioner Vick?
No.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Sanders?
No.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Pinson?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Hooker?
Yes.
Commissioner Farah?
Yes.
Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
No.
Commissioner Boyett?
No.
Commissioner Bowwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Nine ayes, nine noes. Would anyone like to change your vote?
Okay, so the so the amendment fails. County attorney, make sure I'm right. So we're back to the main motion. So the motion on the floor that stands, so now we're open for discussion. Commissioner Neely.
Okay, my point was, I thought when an amendment was made to a motion, we had to vote on that amendment. We don't ask the person who made the initial motion if they accept it or not. I mean, how does that work?
As chairman of the Courthouse and Property Committee, I have, in my last term, not this current term, but the last term, we started studying, well, really, probably prior to that, we started studying the juvenile detention center. And one thing I'm going to point out is, last term and this term, a lot of the commissioners don't stay for our committee. So you really don't know what is really being sent from our committee own. I can tell you, we have been studying juvenile detention center. We had a special committee that was formed maybe five or six years ago. I should have had the exact date, but it's it's been more than four years. The cost of it has continued to rise because of inflation. If you look at housing, that's happened. They we have even cut part of the juvenile detention center out to save some money, to make it as minimum as we can. We did a thorough study that showed that if you sent the sent the juvenile detention, and I'm going to tell you, I didn't, I thought it would be way more. I'll just tell you my personal opinion. When I started studying this, I thought it was going to be cheaper to send them out. The more we studied it, no, it was going to cost a whole lot more, because you still had to have the same number of staff members. You still had, and every single time, you can't guarantee, and they talk about Rutherford County and going there, guys, they don't have staffing for more than what they have right now. So they can't hold, even though they have a facility that'll hold that many, they don't have the staff to do that. So, you know, there's a lot of things that are being discussed that are not facts. And the going, whenever you send them to another, I just want to point this out to the public, because I think you've been misinformed to a certain extent. And when they go to another county, you have to go and pick them up every single time they go to court. If they're in Memphis, that's a lot, and the cost of that really adds up. We studied it in detail, and it was no doubt, it was cheaper to keep them here. I understand spending money is the last thing we want to do, but I'm going to tell you what, I'd rather see us take care of our juveniles and have less, you know, crime in our in our county. We are growing. If we're not proactive, we're going to have big problems. I have lived here my entire life, and I I truly care about this community, and I hope that we do what's right for our juveniles.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Now, this isn't really about anything here except one thing. I've been here 10 years, and a lot of people in this crowd are probably confused. I don't remember us doing rushing to make a motion in a second without the discussion. I just don't remember that until here recently. And I think a lot of folks in the audience, I mean, it looks to me like we would debate, discuss before we made a motion, before we got a second and all this parliamentary stuff. I don't think it makes sense to the folks as a 10-year commissioner. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We ought to debate, discuss, and then do a motion, and that just, I just, that's not something I remember much until the last year or two. Thank you.
Yeah. Robert's rules are motion second and then discussion, because if there's no second, there's no discussion. All right, Commissioner Hooker, did you want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you making that point, because the discussion should have been in committee, but unfortunately, we weren't given that opportunity, so I appreciate you making that point. Now, the other thing is, is I want to dispute some of these points, because we have a lot of people that want to say numbers, and they go on the radio, and they go to all these meetings across the county that we're not privy to. So I want to talk to you specifically about the numbers. Now, three months ago, I requested the numbers of our actual juvenile detention center. So these are not numbers I made up. These are numbers that were given to us from a juvenile detention. From 2021 to the current time, we have dropped a, we dropped 46%, 46% in the amount of juveniles that we house inside Bedford of our Bedford County juveniles. Now, the thing is, is we also talk about Rutherford County. Well, Rutherford County, we've heard lawsuits, we've heard they don't have enough staffing. Well, all that's opinion, because the reason why is the lawsuit had nothing to do with the actual workhouse itself. It had to do with the judge improperly housing juveniles. So that was settled in 2021, so we keep referencing it, but it's been done for two years. The other thing is, is we talk about numbers. Now, let's talk about staff. Last month, at the Rutherford County meeting, they stood up and they have two full-time positions open. That is it in the entire county for the juvenile detention. So when we start throwing out our opinions, we need to make sure and back them up with facts. Now, the other thing is, is let's talk about the other things that's been said on the radio and other things, that they don't take juveniles from other counties. Well, that's news to Rutherford County, because just this month, they've taken 17 from other counties. Now, with that, they have a 64-bed facility. They average about 13 in the facility. So plenty of open beds just 20 miles away. That makes it sound like maybe we shouldn't spend $6 million to not drive them 20 miles. Now, let's talk about a little bit about the costs. $6 million. It started out at $3 million. Now it's $5 million. Now it's six. Next time you turn around, because what they're doing is, is they're inflating the numbers, so therefore, they can come in around $5 million and say, hey, we saved you $1 million. That's why we got a county rep. The thing is, guys, is this is absolutely ludicrous, how we're doing this process. We need to have a process of committees where we can discuss this. This should not be out here on the floor. I shouldn't have to be saying all this, but I have to, because we're going to vote on $10 million here in a minute, and Finance Committee thought, hey, you know, they're not that important on the other committees, so we'll just kind of ram it through, so that way we'll bundle it together, where it appears like it's Washington and say, hey, if you vote against this, you don't want Liberty School. Well, I can tell you that all 18 commissioners up here more than likely would vote 100% for that, but they didn't want to put it together because they know that the others are controversial. Now, let's talk about that seven-year study. I happen to be the vice chair on the Property Committee, and we have talked about the numbers. Well, the numbers they talked about for almost five years were incorrect, per the juvenile detention director, whenever I pointed out that their assumptions were that we were going to have an estimated 200 juveniles a year and an estimated bed night of 1,600. Well, when you look at what the last two years have shown, it is actually 80 average and 500 average nights. The assumptions that they got and the assumptions that they've been going off of is three times higher than what the actual numbers are. So the thing is, is yeah, it does appear to be cheaper to send them or to keep them instead of sending them. That's because y'all been going off the wrong numbers. The thing is, is when you start putting things together, when you start looking at this, the issues are, is you all know that the juvenile detention, as well as these other items, needed to be discussed, but you didn't want them discussed. And the reason why that is, is because you knew that when we discussed them, the true numbers would actually come out. Now, the thing is, is I don't have a radio show to go on and be able to do all this stuff, but the thing is, is what I do have is I have this 10 minutes to be able to tell you all these numbers. I should have been able to tell you in committee and be able to discuss it back and forth, but we weren't given that privilege. Now, I want to talk about the gun range. I am 100% in support of it, because if our sheriff says that we need it, then more than likely, we probably do. I trust his opinion. What I don't like about it is, is you're putting it a couple hundred yards away from a hospital. Guys, people are trying to get better, and the last thing they need, because as I heard it on the radio show, it's going to be day and night shooting, well, the last thing you want to do is be sitting in a hospital bed, listening to gunfire at night. Now, again, I don't question the need for it. I question the logistics. The other thing is, is has anybody even asked the residents of Frank Martin Road? Has anybody asked them? They sure didn't ask them when we built a chemical facility there. So the thing is, is we're just not asking our residents. We're just putting it on the agenda, ramming it through, trying to borrow $10 million. Now, the surplus building, $287,000 was the last bid that we got. Well, guess what? It's 600,000. Where did we find out that the difference of 600,000? Not in committee. I heard it on the radio of why the difference of 600,000. That hasn't been to our committee. It hasn't been discussed in our committee since 287,000. We have not even voted if we even have an idea of selling it, but yet, we're going to borrow money. The last thing I want to, you mark my words, the records building will be next, they'll try to sell it. The next thing it's going to be is, is we're trying to clear it all out to be able to give that away. The thing is, is the other thing that with the surplus building is, we are doing things incorrectly. We are doing things shady, and I'm telling you, we are getting our notes from Washington, because this is absolutely ridiculous. The thing is, is just like Commissioner Anderson said- is, is just like Commissioner Anderson says, I go across the country, I do consulting work for many counties, and I do not see things operate this way. I see people work together, work through processes, and try to come up with resolutions. All these may end up passing in the long run, but we're not ready yet. We're not there. Now, the thing is, is what we need to do is, we need to vote this thing down real quick, and then we need to come back with a motion to approve Liberty School. That way, Liberty gets what they need, and the proper things go back to committee. I am almost embarrassed at the fact that the amendment voted down, because if I have any respect for any commissioner, it is Commissioner Farah, and when he speaks, it is because it's the truth. And if he believes that we're out of order, then we are absolutely out of order.
Commissioner Epperson.
Yes, I agree. Everything should come through the committees, and that seems like it's been skipped. I'm not saying I'm for or against any of this. I'm absolutely for Liberty. I would like to see it unbundled, though, and vote on it, a line item vote. I have concerns about the price, as everybody else. There's 690 kids at Liberty, and they're only getting a little over $3 million for their expansion. So I have a hard time understanding why the juvenile needs $6 million. And, you know, how many kids is that going to be? Because we don't want to be like Rutherford County and have a lot of empty beds. Like I said, I'm not against the other projects. Matter of fact, I'm for the NCRS building that they rent from us. We'll get that money back. But I still think it needs to be unbundled and voted as a line item vote, because, you know, you don't, we need to study some of the other things better.
Commissioner Maddox.
The surplus building was not approved through the proper committee before we got here. The public safety training range not approved. Never even heard about it, but somehow, others tied to this body saw the plans for it. The NCRS office expansion, proper committee, same issue. Juvenile facility, same issue. I'm 100% in favor of the Liberty Wing expansion, the Liberty Wing. Matter of fact, it's past due, and I feel like that we need to do more for the folks out there. Regarding this particular bundled capital outlay note resolution, I don't agree with it, but I understand why you did it. The Liberty School was a perfect item to lump into the other items that several of you knew would not fly in the eyes of us more conservative commissioners. You're going to tell me that this will help with the loan process, and some of you are going to say that it's a public safety issue, and like you did on the radio show, which you wanted to make sure that we all had a copy of. But I'm going to tell you that the rhetoric and the process that some of you used to get us here, just like it happened earlier at the beginning of this session, resembles the same tactics that goes on in Washington, DC. This is not how we do business. This is not how we do business. We don't just lump these things, we're buying, like we're buying something at a retail store. This is ultimately taxpayer money that needs to be separated out. We owe that respect to the taxpayers. This is not some sort of a buy-one-get-one-free deal. In an email from you, Mayor, on 4/25, it stated, "We have executed our due diligence process for the last several months to reach this opportunity to act," end quote. The fact is, in my opinion, you have not done your due diligence. These items have not been approved by the proper committees responsible to provide the recommendations yet. Have you talked about some of these? Yeah. But there has not been true discussion nor debate. Several of this group have just talked at us. And then out of nowhere, this resolution hits us. Let's talk about the juvenile detention center. I know exactly why you want to build that facility. Does that existing facility need some help? Sure. But there, right now, it's an eyesore, and some particular folks want it gone, right? Would it serve its purpose right where it sits? Yes. Would we ever get to a place that we have to send our youth to Memphis, as our faraway cities like it's proclaimed? No. Matter of fact, that's just a scare tactic to try to sell it to us. Matter of fact, Judge Rich said on that radio broadcast last week that Rutherford County is not taking any kids. Well, guess what? They are. A documented phone call to their leadership on 5/9 confirmed that, as well as a meeting of their juvenile detention board on 5/13, as it was communicated publicly. Folks, this concerns me. These folks, these people, are supposed to be our data experts, and I'm not, and I'm seeing conflicts with their data. Regarding the cost of the facility, it's, the project started at well below where we ended now. We've heard various numbers. We've heard four, five. Now it's $6 million. Well, that's a lot of money. What happened to the discussion on this? The perception is that some of you just want to do what you always seem to do, which is decide that you know better than everyone else, including your constituents, and just push this right on through. It happened at the beginning of this session. I'm going to make a prediction that if this does go through, there's probably going to be some sort of a big social media push, and a media push to talk about how our new owner rep, Mr. Sweeney, saved us a ton of money. I can think of many other ways we can spend this $10 million. We can build that wing at Liberty, sure. Let's do more for education. Let's do more for our youth. Let's figure out a way to not put the money directly into debt services and start to figure out how to give our seniors a true tax break. Heck, let's give all of our citizens a tax break. Let's do more for the city of War Trace. Look at their water issues. I mean, could we not step in and try to help them out? I would like for a commissioner on the Finance Committee to articulate to me why any of this is a good idea, and why it was lumped together. Speak up, speak up and on it when I'm done. Why did you shove this through without proper discussion and debate? I want to hear, I don't want to hear about the interest rate deal. I want to hear why all this was bundled together for us to vote on without it going through the proper committees. As it pertains to the resolution, I'd like to add that this is a blatant disregard for the established process. It's reached a new level. Even on social media last week, the Bedford County Gov Facebook page, covering a recent chamber event, was talking about these projects, the ones that we're about to vote on, in my opinion, like it was already done. Our county mayor seems to have spent more time talking about the new firing range with the chamber, apparently, than he did talking to the county commission, because, again, we had no idea about this project. I find that disrespectful to the people of this county. I have some questions. Why did this not go through the proper committee first? How did the juvenile detention center costs jump to $6 million? Why is this truly bundled together like an omnibus bill? How did a $600,000 surplus dollar surplus building, quote, grow from $287,000 in September? Where's the updated information? Why are we borrowing money when only one bid has even been received, and that was Liberty? Have you checked with the people in the area regarding the shooting range? How do they feel about it? Why did it not go through law enforcement? Why did we not know? These are issues that need to be discussed. They need to be debated. That is what we're here for. The days of just cramming things through are over. I promise you that I'm going to ask questions. Unfortunately, last April, I made a comment that I don't trust this current administration, and the fact still remains. Matter of fact, it's gotten even deeper. Commissioner, I urge you to do the right thing. The last question that I have, and I'm done, is why does there seem to be a small group of self-proclaimed political elites that continue to try to make decisions for 52,000 people in this county, without the people's input in which they serve? It makes no sense to me. Smile, laugh, do what you will. Ultimately, we answer to these people. And it's a shame that we're doing business like we are tonight.
Commissioner Tony Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of us know, Bedford County is one of the very top counties in the state for agricultural production, with beef production and poultry production being at the top, corn, soybeans, wheat, hay close behind, and then we've got our horse industry. Our farmers are the backbone of our county and our nation. Every day, we're losing farmers, we're losing farms, but most of all, we are losing tons of topsoil, which is our most important resource. Here in our county, we have one of the top-producing soil and conservation use districts in our state. They help our farmers with erosion, water irrigation, stream migration, clean keepers streamed clean. They also help farmers with new farming techniques, help our farmers with paperwork for grain. Their workload has dramatically increased, and they need this expansion. About five or six years ago, they got their second man, and now they're getting their third one. They need room to work. Bedford County Commission voted about 11 years ago to build them an office building. Okay, they've been there for 10 years. We lease it to the federal government. Their building was paid off in four years. The last six years, the rental income for the building goes to county general funds. Folks, we need all the help possible for our farmers. They struggle. I mean, look at last week, the flood. It's cost farmers hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last week and a half. They have washed crops away. They have absolutely watered this over the crops for days, and they have just grounded it out. Wheat is blown flat on the ground. If those heads touch the ground, they're going to lose every ounce of the seed, because it's going to rot. The hay crops, it's blown flat. We're going to lose half of our hay crop when we cut our hay. We need all the help we can get from soil conservation, and they need our help. Okay? I can't express, I've been farming about, close to 65 years now, folks, and I know what they mean to us, and they need our help. And right now, tonight, we need to fund their project. We need to fund all of the projects, and I urge everybody to go on and vote for this, and let's get this moving forward.
Commissioner Yaki.
I'd like to ask the county attorney, the Finance Committee is a standing committee.
I'll come back to you, Commissioner Hooker, but everybody's got to have, Commissioner Neely, I don't believe she spoke on the matter yet.
Okay, I am not going to belabor the point, because I certainly agree to the points that others have made in bundling this situation. I am in support of the Liberty School wing that is in my district, and I hate the fact that I feel like publicly I have to say, I support Liberty, but I don't like the process of bundling this. And we keep talking about the changes in the cost. Well, at the finance meeting, I pulled up the handout, and it has Liberty coming in, it's nearly $5 million, $4,97,937. But then, in the projected cost in this agenda we have tonight, it's $3,364. There's too much difference in numbers for us to know what we are truly borrowing money for. And I get it, we're going to talk about the interest rates, and if I had to guess from my years of having done this in the past, though, our financial advisor said, well, if you can get it up to $10 million, we're going to get a much better rate. So let's just make up some numbers, because we only have one bid on anything. The rest of it is just estimates that are moving targets. And as some have already said, when those come in lower, then somebody's going to take credit for, oh, look, we saved you money. That's the wrong way to do this. And I'm really appalled at the fact that I have to sit here and say to my constituents in my district, where the people's children go to Liberty, that, hey, guys, I support Liberty, but I don't support how we as a commission are doing business. This is not right. And I applaud Commissioner Farah for standing up and saying, we have committee structure for a reason. It's for a reason. There's 18 of us. We each should have our say in our committees. Move out a committee, if it needs to go to Finance for approval, it goes, and then it comes here. We're not doing that, and it's embarrassing, quite frankly, to me. It is. So I would urge everyone tonight for us to pull this apart. I'm not saying that any of the other projects are bad. I'm not saying that I would or would not support any of the other projects. I get it. My biggest issue is the moving target of the numbers that are not adding up any which way we go. And there's processes that we should follow. And I'm sorry, but I like to follow the rules. And so I would urge everyone tonight to, let's vote this down, pull Liberty out separate, vote on it, and then revisit these other things in appropriate committee. Thank you.
Commissioner Adam Thomas.
I want to begin by just saying that I have respect for every commissioner and you, Mr. Mayor, and all this. And I don't believe that anything nefarious is going on. I don't think, anything negative. I think everyone here is truly trying to have a better Bedford. I believe that everyone has a, the right heart in mind for what they think needs to go on. And I don't know if I'm able to do this right now, but I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we vote on these each individually now, make an amendment to...
Second.
Commissioner Vicks.
Oh, his was to, Biff's was to defer it back. This is to, a line item vote to not.
Okay. Parliamentarian says that you can offer an amendment, so please repeat what you're offering as an amendment.
I'd like to make the amendment for a line item vote on each of these capital outlay projects.
Second. Okay. Now, again, we have the official motion on the floor, so he's got to have the opportunity to agree to that.
No, Mr. Chairman, I can't agree, because we don't have the authority for line item veto on the county commission. He's asking us to do something we don't have the legal authority to do.
Not a veto, it's a vote.
But he's asking to, but you're not accepting his amendment.
I'd accept his amendment.
Okay, so then we'll have to vote on the potential for the amendment, and if it fails, then you're back to the main motion. I, let's try it. Commissioner Thomas.
Would I be out of order if I ask a question before we do this?
I don't think you have discussion till after you have your motion and your second. So discussion before you vote is appropriate? If you need clarification, is it related to that clarification of the amendment itself?
No. I'm going to throw it out there. Y'all do what you want to with it. What if we deferred this for 30 days? What would that do to us?
Okay. Do, the financial management folks are in the audience. Do you want to bring them up and see what they say it does?
Point of voter, we've got to vote on the amendment before we do any other discussion.
Totally, totally agree with that. All right. So, we're back to, when your name's called, vote for or against. If you vote yes, you're for the amendment that Commissioner Adam Thomas has put forward. If you vote no, you're for leaving the standing motion that is active, and that was approval of it as presented. Do we understand? So yes would be amended, no would be to leave it as it is. Everybody understand what, how you're voting, what you're doing? Okay, when your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boutwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyett?
No.
Commissioner Brothers?
No.
Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Hooker?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Maddox?
Yes.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinson? Commissioner Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vick?
Nope.
Commissioner Yaki?
No.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? Nine ayes, nine noes.
Okay, so it fails. We're back to the rain motion now. Open for still discussion. Mark Thomas, Commissioner?
My question is, what if we defer this? It seems like Commissioner Neely said, there's numbers moving everywhere. What if we deferred this whole package? What would that do to us as a financial decision over the next 30 days, so that we could get clarification, get through proper committee, and then, in me saying this, let me just say this, that the firing range was in the original plans of the Sheriff's Department before it was ever built, and it was took out. And at that time, I'm wanting to think, and don't hold me to this, but it was around $60,000 to $80,000, and we'd cut it out of that budget, along with a lot of other things that was supposed to be done. So I understand the need of that facility being there. This is an engineered facility. It's built right, with sound barriers, proper bullet-catching mechanisms in place, whereas the facility they're using now does not have. I was with the Sheriff's Department as a reserve for 30 years out there. I was with the Sheriff's Department as a reserve for 30 years out there. We traveled to AEDC for firing range. We traveled to Lincoln County. We went to Chris White's place a time or two. Sometimes we just went out in an open field to qualify. And they built this place out here, and now we've leased the property to somebody else, and we don't have control over it. So understand the firing range. The juvenile facility, like I say, I was involved with the Sheriff's Department. I can remember Judge Rich being down there in that house, and you would have juveniles handcuffed to chairs inside the dispatch room with the dispatcher for three officers out of this whole county. Yes, you might be sitting there six to eight hours waiting to find a place for a juvenile to go. So understand, Bradford County, and I don't know what the truth is there, but my thinking is that they've probably put a lot of thought and study into this, and they know where they're gonna be in 20 years. That's the reason they probably built the facility that they built. If we continue to put this off, the facility they're in is not the greatest. Location, I don't care. We can put it right here in the basement of the courthouse if we want to, but the facility is getting in bad shape. I understand Bedford County's growing, so is our juvenile problem's gonna grow with it. Just about on a daily basis, listening to the radio, you'll hear officers dispatched to someone's home for an unruly juvenile who don't wanna go to school today. Back when I went to school, if you got up, didn't wanna go to school, mom and daddy whipped that hind end, put you on the bus, and you went on. It's not like that anymore. They have to call an officer to go to somebody's house to handle these kids. This problem is gonna continue to grow. So I guess back to my original question is, if we defer this whole package for 30 days, what will that do to us as far as the loan or whatever, how that process works?
Are you comfortable we bring finance up? We have both our financial and our...
If nobody has any objections to it?
Let them respond to that, if you both step up there.
I'm gonna defer to John Warner, who's our financial advisor.
When we did the RFP, it's common for someone, when they give us a rate, that it's only good for so many days for a particular closing. We're looking, if this body does pass this, for a June 5 closing. It is highly unlikely, just to err on the side of caution, absent of any action tonight, that they will honor those numbers that they've given us for this RFP. So it's probably wise to think that we would just have to start all over again.
John has worked on getting rates quoted. We got a fixed rate of 4.33%. He then went to one of the banks, and then we... This went through several banks, and Regions Banks has quoted us 4.32 with a call option, which will be in two years, so we can pay it off early without a penalty.
What's this... What does that do to Liberty School? There was some discussion about the actual being able to execute the...
When we put the RFP out, it was for the amount that's being discussed this evening. And when someone makes a bid, it's based on certain known factors. If we change those numbers, I guess we could go back and ask them, "Would you be interested in honoring these numbers and these provisions that were right for, you know, given the RFP on a lesser amount?" I don't know the answer to that, and I would have to go back and, you know, call and find out, and then also discuss with the other bidders as well before I can make that decision.
What I'd also like to add, that with Liberty School, we've got a contract pending, because we bid it with the Thomas wing, and I can't sign the contract until there's funding available. So it would delay the funding. I don't know how that's gonna affect the contractor. He may not want to do that. We may have to rebid it. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
I believe Commissioner Hooker has hand up first, and I'll come to you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I failed to mention earlier is, I had a conversation with Superintendent Garrett, and I did wanna relay. I asked specifically the question of the impact of juvenile detention center toward testing numbers. Did they affect that in a negative way to the school system? Her answer was yes. I also kinda had further conversation, and she also alluded to if they are a special education student that falls into that category, which today is significantly larger than it was in years past, they have to be enrolled on day one. And so it also costs the school system additional money to house out... Or to be able to educate out-of-county kids. The other thing is, is if those students fail to enroll at another school, so they come here for Bedford County for a period of time, and they leave Bedford County and go back to their county, and they don't enroll, then they are still on the books here in Bedford County and will count towards those test scores. And so I know that there's been a lot of back and forth with that. I would like to make an amendment to this. I would like to make an amendment that we defer items B, C, and D, and we vote on A and E tonight.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, again, this constant motion, our dilatory in nature, we were debating the same thing, and I asked the chair not recognize this motion as improper, and let's talk about the main motion, and let's get back to that. Everyone's had their chance to talk. Let's go to the main motion. This is a dilatory stop.
Point of order. We have an amendment on the table with a second. No discussion.
What exactly was your amendment? Is it different from before?
Yes, I included the NCRS building. I felt like that is necessary to be able to move forward with, because they need the space as well as Liberty School. But I would like to defer items B, C, and D until they are properly vetted in committee.
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm probably out of order, and you can call me out and tell me to shut up if you want to, but if we do that, then it has to go right back to the finance, and they've gotta go back and rebid the numbers. You can't do that.
So is it proper for him to be able to ask for this amendment?
I think we had a substantially same amendment earlier that failed. You may wanna reflect that, and if that's the case, then this amendment would not be proper, because we can't continue to amend the same or substantially the same issue.
So that's your ruling? Okay, so we can't go forward there. Commissioner Vick?
Mr. Chairman, six years ago, we came into this commission with this administration, a number of us did, and we inherited the biggest financial mess one can imagine. Cost overruns, schools falling down. One former commissioner told me, he's got a solution for solving our schools out there. Let them fall down, then people quit sending their kids there. That's the kinda attitude we've had towards schools. We found a way, a path to try to recover from 20 some-odd years of benign neglect, and our pathway and our plan over this six years is working. We now, for the first time, will have all of our kids out of those horrible portable buildings. We're seeing our education scores go up. We have direction from the top. We've got leadership from the top to the bottom. Our county commissioner, or majority of the county commissioner, and our mayor's office is giving us a direct path, and things are working. We have a prospering county. We're being awarded nationally, statewide. Our partnership with the state couldn't be stronger. We're having problems with our juvenile, which we had six years ago. This juvenile issue didn't just come up. It's been discussed. It's been debated. Commissioner Sanders went through a long process, you've heard all this, to come to the conclusion. And did the price go up? Absolutely, it went up. Year two, three, four, five, the delay, delay, delay. The price of the school went up. Why? Because they wanted to delay, delay, delay. The surplus building, why did it go up? Because everybody wants to delay. We don't need it. Let's kick it back. Let's go to committee. Let's all... These things have been to committee. We've made the decisions. We've had the vetting process. It's been transparent, and people who didn't know about it didn't attend the committee meetings, and now they're claiming this is like Washington. Well, I agree with them. It is exactly like Washington, where people stand up and scream and yell and posture and make all these crazy accusations because they don't wanna govern, they wanna campaign all the time. And that's the wrong problem, and that's the wrong attitude to have. We can't have constant campaigns. We have to govern. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to vote on this. If we vote for it tonight, we vote for it. If we vote for it, we can put kids in school, we can solve the juvenile detention problem, we can fix all these problems that we've had. We're coming to a conclusion where we now even have enough funds to build projects ourself, where six years ago, we didn't have enough... Only luck we had six years ago was bad luck. Let's vote on this issue, and let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Okay, do you wanna debate further, or are you ready to vote? Yeah, the question called, time to vote, unless 10 want to continue debate.
I object. We should continue debate.
Okay, if you wish to continue debate, raise your right hand. Let me see if we got 10 of you. One, two, three, four, five, six. Do you reflect six that wish to continue debate? Can you keep your... Put your hand back up, I don't wanna misrepresent. Okay, so question is in order, which means we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna call a point of order. It seems to me that our attorney's opinion of Commissioner Hooker's amendment suggestion is just an opinion. It may be similar to what we just heard from someone else, but the fact of the matter is, these items represent not just a few cents, these are millions of dollars that we're talking about. These are taxpayers' money, and I am absolutely baffled that we have half of this commission that does not wanna continue debate. That absolutely... It embarrasses me. But I do call a point of order. I think we should consider Commissioner Hooker's amendment.
Okay, point of order can be overturned. Is there 10 of you? Raise your hand if you want to overturn the parliamentarian's ruling. Raise your hand, please. You don't... Okay. One. All right. So now we're ready to vote. Question's been called for. When your name's called, vote for or against. Yes is to approve this resolution. No would be to defeat it. Okay? So we're in the all or nothing? 10? Okay. And it will take 10 for it to pass. The motion is second, was solid. Now, it still takes 10 yeses to pass it. Okay? When your name's called, vote for or against.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Boutwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyett?
Yes.
Commissioner Brothers?
Yes.
Commissioner Epperson?
No.
Commissioner Farah?
Pass.
Commissioner Hooker?
Pass.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner Pinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Mark Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Pass.
Commissioner Vick?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaki?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to change your vote? 10 ayes, 5 noes, 3 pass.
All right, so the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2417, which is the litter and trash collection grant the Highway Department administers.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second. We're open for discussion. All right, here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next is standing committees. Rules of legislative, nothing to report, law enforcement, or courthouse and property. We're onto Financial Management Committee. Quarterly financials.
Moved to approve.
Okay, we're open for discussion. All right? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is surplus property from the Board of Education.
Make a motion to approve.
All right? Any comments or questions? Commissioner Epperson, I'm sorry.
I did have a question. It's just 'cause I don't... I mean, I don't know on here. It says status code, and I noticed that none of these, anything was filled in. Operable or not operable, is that something we normally just don't fill in, or...
Now, we're talking about Board of Education's list, correct?
Put this list right now, but I mean, it could be any list on any of them. I mean, it doesn't have to be Board... I'm not calling out the Board of Education. I'm just asking, is that something we don't always do or don't ever do?
We have someone from the school board here. I know the school board approves their surplus and then it passed through for us, but I'm happy to bring him up if you wanna ask that question. I'm not sure exactly on specifically the one that you're asking.
Like all of them on there, on the status code, on everything listed, doesn't say operable, unoperable, unknown.
Yeah, would you...
Do we just normally leave that blank up for everybody, is... I guess is what I'm asking, or...
Do you wanna speak on that? Or do you wanna defer it a month and ask them to disclose that information to you? I think we could certainly ask the school board to do that.
No, I mean, it's not a need to defer it. That's just a question I had that...
Okay. Yeah, I don't... The school system has someone present. I don't know if he wants to speak, but our financial folks are right here, if you wanna...
I think that's just a column on the spreadsheet, and it's not used, so it's just a title.
Is that satisfactory, or do you...
Yeah, I just...
Okay.
I mean, I just think that we ought to start putting that on there. That way we know if it's operable or not operable, or if the condition is unknown. Most of it we would know when we surplus it, but I mean, that's fine.
Sure, and I'd be happy to make the school superintendent aware of that request. Is there any other comments related to that? Questions regarding that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, the next item, I'm... Is surplus from the Highway Department, and I believe it's listed for you.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, open for discussion there. Okay, here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then next is the right-of-way and road cut permit process through the Highway Department.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, we're open for discussion. Mark's in the audience. All right, here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then the BCMS write-offs.
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is second, open for discussion. Clarification there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And the next other business, because this came in after and was signed by Commissioner Greg Vick and Scott Johnson, with some comment earlier, but this was the securest technology values social contract. Again, it's more than one year, so therefore it goes before the commission.
Moved to approve.
Okay, we're open for discussion. Commissioner Epperson.
We say that was a grant from previously. Did somebody say that earlier?
Yes, my understanding, would you like to have Robert come up and clarify? But yes, it's grant. If you step up, that way you can answer.
Yes, that is a grant, and the body scanners were included in that. And what they did is they were able, with the money that was left over, to do a four-year maintenance agreement, which makes it a five-year contract, which is why it's in front of the commission. If we don't use the money, we have to send it back, so it is grant funds.
Is that...
I wanna make sure I was clear on that, 'cause I didn't know that earlier, but like I said, I heard somebody say that in the... Some time or another.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So now we're down to some announcements. Let's start with the county offices will be closed on May the 27th for Memorial Day, and there's going to be a Memorial Day service at the Veterans Plaza that day at 11:00. Also, for fiscal year '24, '25, upcoming budget year, we're having a budget study session, which will be held at 5:00 on the same night as Financial Management Committee. So Financial Management Committee, 4:15, will recess and come back in at 5:00, so that anyone that wants to come and be a part of that will be able to do it. So that's, what date is that? I thought I had, March the 28th, May, May 28th, sorry. Everybody understand that? So that's where, and then we'll be ready to put the books out, I believe, in that point. Commissioner Sanders?
So tonight, I'm making my formal announcement. I've accepted a job in Pensacola, Florida. I have very mixed emotions. I've been here for almost 10 years and I've been very blessed to have worked with some wonderful people. I think a lot of everybody here, I've lived here my entire life. I have very, very mixed feelings. I'm moving. However, I've, God is in this decision. Everything that's happened has went extremely fast. I've prayed about it and I think it's where God wants me right now. So I just want to say I wish everyone the best. My last day will be June the 7th, and then I will be heading to Florida on the 8th, and I appreciate any prayers. And you can definitely come and visit. But I really wish everybody the best. I mean, Bedford is growing and you've got a great group of people here. Just keep sticking together. We may not always agree with each other, but we all still love each other, I think. And we love Bedford County. So I really appreciate the 10 years I've been able to serve and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then one other announcement I need to make sure that we all know, and I think we put this date out before, but we will have to have a June 27 special call commission meeting besides the regular June 11 meeting because of end of year, at 7:00 for end of year cleanups and actually approve the budget if it's not actually on the agenda for June. So everybody, I know some have vacation plans and what have you, so the June 27 is a necessary meeting whether the budget has been actually voted on by the commission or not.
What time, Mr. Chairman?
7:00. I'm sorry, I thought I said that. Thank you, Anita. All right. Any other announcements? We're certainly going to miss you, Commissioner Sanders. Thank you for all you've done for us, and we look forward to hearing from you and maybe visit Pensacola, greater Pensacola area. Okay, yeah, just north, so still going to see those blue angels. All right. Any announcements or comments before we're ready to adjourn?